Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alodim Orange Pradium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC, I am the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is class number sixty, Class 60. What did we learn in Class 59? Well, we will finish you up right on Articles thirty-one through forty-five of the Act Algesiras of nineteen oh six, Chapter Three. And what did we learn in Class 59? We're learning more about how the Moors are able to hold on to the jurisdiction over any banking in the empire, right? So therefore, we oversee all the banking financial institutions. That means we oversee all the gold as well, right? We're overseeing all the monetary funds in our empire. The treaties give us the sovereign jurisdiction over all monies in the empire. That's what Moors have to understand, right? Because you cannot have a state that's independent without the means and ability to get into what's called trade and commerce with other states. So now that Moors are what you call varying stages of advancement. One of the obligations we have as now modern organic states is to get into our financial banking. That's a part of the triple principle, right? So your triple principle is sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains, and economic liberty without any inequality. And how do we maintain our equality of banking? First thing we have to do is we have to get our gold returned before we can mint gold, right? We have to get our precious metals returned back to us in a form of gold and silver, right? It doesn't matter if the United States of America has put their mint on it. Soon as we get it back, what happens? We melt it down and we turn around and put our mint on it, right? And who does that? The Empire State does that. Once we're now coming to a point where we start to conclude, once we conclude the Constitution of the United States of Morocco, then the United States of Morocco and its constitution through the trustees that oversee the national trust, the national treasury, as well as our state banks can now get together and formulate what our currency is going to look like, et cetera, right? So therefore, when we're talking about our Empire State Bank, right? The Empire State Bank of what? Of Morocco. That Empire State Bank oversees the vast empire and all banking institutions in the empire are subordinate to our state bank. What type of state bank? The Empire State Bank. Obviously, each one of our Moorish states will have its own independent bank within its state. But that independent state will also have the Empire State Bank that oversees each individual bank that's within our several territories of the Moorish state governments, right? So at the end of the day, Chapter Three is about controlling your economics, right? Economic liberty without any inequality. What does that really mean? That the colonists cannot do anything to try to prohibit, to try to interfere, to try to create an impediment for Moors to get their gold back and for Moors from there to establish their banking institutions along with their own notes, their own currency, that way we can get into trading and commerce with the other states around planet Earth. That must be understood, right? What else did we learn from Class 59? We started learning about this word called firman, F-I-R-M-A-N, right? Firman, that was Article forty-five, right? And the firman talks about that being a charter, that being a permit, that being a grant, that being a colony in the empire of Morocco. We'll talk about that a little bit more today. We talked about that in Class 59. We'll do a quick recap of that today because it's very important for Moors to understand what a firman is. What else is a firman? A firman is a constitution. Keep in mind, as Sidi Mohamed extended, the colonists gave them an opportunity to establish their constitution in Morocco. That constitution commonly known as the United States of America, right? The contracting state. That was an extended grant. The Sidi Mohamed granted the thirteen colonies would allow them to establish a constitution. But that constitution came from what? It came from the sovereign. The sovereign was the empire of Morocco. Sidi Mohamed was the administrator over the empire at the time. So the sovereign administrator, Sidi Mohamed, allowed the United States of America to establish a constitution. But that constitution is a firman and that firman is a charter. That must always be understood, alright? We'll talk about that a little bit more today, alright? So let's go ahead and get into Class, Class 60, alright? As everyone knows, we always open up about the constitution. Each Moorish state will have to have their own independent constitution that needs to be ratified, be polled, and promulgated, right? With the United Nations Charter, Article one or two with the Secretary and Secretary General, right? So everything is about constitutions because you cannot enforce treaties, declarations, conventions, or resolutions without having a constitution that outlines your territory, your permanent territory, right? And also you have your three graces of government. After that, you accede to the treaties and then after that, you can start to enforce your treaties, alright? Okay, let's go ahead and get into the class. Alright. So obviously in Class 59, we read up to Article forty-five. But as an overlap, we'll go ahead and read Article forty-five four more times and then we get into Article forty-six, right? We'll try to finish up Chapter Three today, which is Articles forty-six through fifty-eight and all the Articles thirty-one through fifty-eight. And we'll try to finish up forty-six through fifty-eight today, alright? So let's go ahead and jump in and get started. So as we already know, in Class 59, we read over Article forty-five. But Article forty-five is a very important article. Why is that? It sets up the jurisdiction. What type of jurisdiction? Not only the state jurisdiction, but it sets up the civil and criminal jurisdiction over any banking in the empire. What type of empire? The Moorish empire, right? So who oversees the banking in the empire of Morocco? That will end up being our Empire State Bank. That's who oversees the banking. But who helps to support the Empire State with any type of dispute? That is the Consular Court of Morocco, right? So Article forty-five starts to get into this. Now keep in mind, in Article forty-five, go back to France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, right? Page one ninety-seven, right? Page one ninety-seven. Keep in mind, the ICJ pointed out two Moors. That Article forty-five was one of the articles that the ICJ pointed out that said, "You Moors need to enforce your treaty provisions of Article forty-five," right? And Article forty-five is a standalone article oversees all banking in Morocco. That's very important to understand, right? That means that the Consular Court can issue its orders, judgments, and opinions from Consular Court as it relates to banking, right? Your Consular Court can immediately issue an order for the United States of America or any trustees to immediately return our gold billions. Immediately. And that order is final. The only way the United States of America can now come in and try to appeal that or try to reject to it, A, they have to now try to appeal that to the Consular Court or the Minister of Foreign Affairs or the Consular Journal. If they still don't like that appeal, guess what the only option they have left? To take it to the International Court of Justice. Because they feel as though it is unfair to them that they have to return the gold back to the Moors according to the treaty provisions. Obviously, we already know that's a losing position for them because the treaty is the supreme law of the land, not their constitution, United States. And it's certainly not the constitution of their international organization that are known as the United States, which is a corporation, right? So under Article forty-five, the ICJ points this out. It's very important to understand. What did they point out? They're pointing out about the Act Algesiras, talking about the concert jurisdiction, and they point out Article forty-five. Okay, let's go back to it. It's the World Court pointing that out. Okay, Article forty-five. "Actions instituted in Morocco by the bank shall be brought before the Consular Court of the defendant or before the jurisdiction of Morocco." Let's pause right there. Who's the defendant? If we're now the sovereign state, right? The Moorish sovereign states. That means immediately, the United States of America becomes the defendant, right? Because they're the contracting state, right? They become now the respondent and we are the claimant. We're making a claim against them with a plaintiff. Plaintiff means we're making a complaint with a complainant. And they're the respondent, i.e. the defendant, because they're trying to defend their position, right? We bring them into Consular Court based upon what? Whatever they're doing to violate our economic liberty without any inequality and specifically talking about the financial institution of our empire bank and dealing with them, okay? So as you can already see, the treaty specifically talks about the jurisdiction. Article forty-five. "Actions instituted in Morocco." That's the key. Actions instituted in Morocco, not the United States of America. Actions instituted in Morocco, not the United States. It's all about jurisdiction, about your language, Moors. You must change your vernacular. You're not in the United States and you're not in the United States of America. You're where? In Morocco. And where's the United States of America? In Morocco. Where's the United States? International Organization? In Morocco. Okay, Article forty-five. "Actions instituted in Morocco by the bank shall be brought before the Consular Court of the defendant or before the jurisdiction of Morocco." So it's all about the jurisdiction of Morocco. Everything's about jurisdiction. So when you use the word jurisdiction, that's a very powerful word. What does jurisdiction really mean? It's talking about who has civil and criminal jurisdiction. And when you have the civil and criminal jurisdiction, that's called integrity of domains. And whoever can maintain the integrity of domains controls the wealth. She who controls the land controls its laws and its wealth. That's the triple principle, right? So up here, this is all about jurisdiction. This is why the ICJ is pointing this out as it relates to the monetary fund, as it relates to gold, as it relates to banking. What type of bank? State banks. State banks, okay? Let's continue from the top. Article forty-five. "Actions instituted in Morocco by the bank shall be brought before the Consular Court of the defendant or before the jurisdiction of Morocco in accordance with the rules of competence established by the Sharikhian treaties and firms." This is a very important word to understand right here. Why is this in the treaty? Because they already underscored the treaty. But why have they added this word firman?
Constitution.
Because it's about constitutions. So you're enforcing treaties, constitutions. And who has a constitution called the United States of America? Well, the colonists do. Because they're tenants in Morocco. And according to their constitution, Article six, clause two, in which they refer to as the supremacy clause, treaty is the supreme law of the land. So right here, the firman is being pointed out. Treaties and constitutions, treaties and charters, treaties and permits, treaties and licenses, treaties and colonies. Firman is a multi-use word, right? It's a generic word. Let's go to it. Firman, as a recap. Mother?
One, a sovereign's edict. Synonyms, decree, order, command, commandment, proclamation, mandate. Two, a grant or permit. Synonyms, authorization, license, pass, voucher, ticket, warrant, document, certification, passport, visa.
Okay, so that's a firman, right? The firman is issued by the sovereign's edict, right? And we learned about the edict. The edict is what? Mother, please?
An official order or proclamation issued by a person in authority. Quote-unquote, Clovis issued an edict protecting church property. Synonyms, decree, firman, order, command, commandment, mandate, proclamation, pronouncement, dictum, dictate, fiat, bill, promulgation law, statute, act, enactment, ordinance, regulation, rule, ruling, injunction, manifesto.
Okay, so the edict is issued by the, is an official order or proclamation issued by a person in authority. So Sidi Mohamed gave what? A proclamation. What's the proclamation? That's the promulgation. Promulgation means what? Notification, a public notification. So when the colonists turn around and tell you Morocco was the first country to recognize the United States of America, what does recognize mean? That Sidi Mohamed, the sovereign, performed a proclamation. He performed a promulgation out loud to the world that he recognized the thirteen colonies. Because he, the sovereign, Sidi Mohamed, who was the administrator over the Moorish empire, allowed the thirteen colonies to remain in Morocco with what? A grant, permission, a license, a charter, a constitution, i.e. a corporation that was set up in Morocco, right? Okay. How do we know that it is a what? A decree, right? It's a decree. It's a firman. So we look it up, the word firman, right? The firman wasn't ordered from Sidi Mohamed that allowed them to set it up, right? But what did we really learn about the firman? Let's go back. The firman is a grant or permit. And all grants and permits have what? Expiration date. All grants and permits, licenses, have an expiration date. Why? Because you need to take a look and see if that's something you want to actually renew on both sides of the parties, right? Okay, let's go and now take a look at this charter, this firman the United States of America had, okay? We're taking a moment, take a look at this, it's very important. Okay. Here's a provision from the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, Article twenty-five, okay? Now, Article twenty-five, mother?
Article twenty-five. "This treaty shall continue in full force with the help of God for fifty years. We have delivered this book into the hands of the before-mentioned Thomas Barkley on the first day of the blessed month of Ramadan in the year one thousand two hundred."
Okay, so in seventeen eighty-seven, the constitution, okay? In seventeen eighty-seven, Sidi Mohamed allowed the United States of America to sign on to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And he gave them a fifty-year lease agreement. He gave them a fifty-year permit. He gave them a fifty-year charter. He gave them a fifty-year corporation status to remain in Morocco for fifty years, right? Then in eighteen thirty-six, it was time to do what? Renew it or terminate it? Okay. Alright, mother?
Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, Article twenty-five. "This treaty shall continue in force with the help of God for fifty years after the expiration of which term..."
Pause. Everything you said, Sidi, read text, I add it for study purposes, right? This is AMPAC study session. Because what we got to understand, we have to break this down into two parts. This was all one paragraph. I broke it down into two parts because you have to read it in two parts, okay? There's two parts here in this provision. Alright, so let's start from the beginning.
"This treaty shall continue in force with the help of God for fifty years after the expiration of which term expiring September fifteenth eighteen eighty-six. The treaty shall continue to be binding on both parties until the one shall give twelve months' notice to the other of an intention to abandon it, in which case its operations shall cease at the end of twelve months."
Okay, you catch what was happening? It's two parts to this contract. In eighteen thirty-six, Article twenty-five, which was the only provision that they changed between seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. The only provision that was changed was Article twenty-five. The United States of America wanted an opportunity to be able to cancel the contract whenever they got ready. So Sidi said, "Okay, I have no problem with that. That's right up the provision that gives you an opportunity to cancel it as well," okay? But watch what happened. "The treaty shall continue in force with the help of God for fifty years." So that's the permit. That's the firman. "After the expiration of which term?" What term? The fifty years is the term of the permit, the charter, the constitution. It expires when? September fifteenth eighteen eighty-six. Where'd I get that date from? Okay, let's go to the original treaty, eighteen thirty-six. "Peace and Friendship Treaty sealed by the Emperor of Morocco at Mecca Nice, September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six." So therefore, if you're looking at fifty years, right? Fifty years will stop at September fifteenth eighteen eighty-six. Okay, let's go back to it. So it expired fifty years later, September fifteenth eighteen eighty-six. So the treaty expired. But in the provision, what did they do? They said, "However, the treaty shall continue to be binding on both parties until the one shall give twelve months' notice to the other." Who's the other party? So who the parties are states, right? "To the other of an intention to abandon it, in which case its operations shall cease at the end of twelve months." So what's happening? The treaty expired on eighteen eighty-six and it went automatically basically into an annual contract. It's an annual renewing permit. It's an annual renewing charter, right? So watch this. "The treaty shall continue to be binding on both parties even though the term has expired of the fifty-year requirement," right? So now, it's now down to a twelve-month notice. It's twelve months. I'll break it down. "The treaty shall continue to be binding on both parties until one shall give twelve months' notice to the other of an intention to abandon it, in which case its operations shall cease at the end of twelve months." So what's happening? This is what you call a type of contract that doesn't have an expiration date. But it immediately expires if one of the parties petitions to abandon it. Meaning it no longer has a fixed fifty-year obligation. It basically expires as soon as one of the parties extends a notice to abandon it. Which means every year, because we're talking twelve months, every year it basically just renews, every year that no one petitions to abandon it. So it's been renewing ever since eighteen eighty-six until it's just perpetual, right? It becomes perpetual to someone now petitions to abandon it. Why is this important to understand? Because most people think it's a fifty-year contract. Now, the fifty-year provision obligation ended in September fifteenth eighteen eighty-six. The second paragraph talks about now, it immediately went into a status where it became perpetual until one of the parties abandoned to, petitioned to abandon it, right?
Are we petitioning them to abandon it so at any time a Moorish state empire can acknowledge that they need to remove an abandoned state because now it's open? So at any time that we let them know that we have formed our state within twelve months, then they should abandon the throne, correct?
No. So it all comes down to what? Article twenty-four of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, right? Article twenty-four talks about what? "You must now, any time there's a dispute, the two disputing states must submit a friendly application that sets up the arrangements, i.e. the mechanisms. And therefore, someone has to reject to that application." So we would have to fill out an application in order to submit to them that we want to now petition to abandon the treaty. They have certain mechanisms in place where they can reject that in order to now get into what's called mediation.
But we don't want to abandon the treaty, do we?
No, we don't. But I'm just reading the treaty provisions as is, right? Why is this important to understand? What's the mindset here? You must understand, the United States of America, let's think about this for a second. Since they've always known about this provision, why didn't they petition to abandon it? And say, "We ain't worried about Moors, we just gonna stay here permanently."
Because they have to get out of it.
Right? Right? So if the United States of America were to petition to abandon the treaty, they would've lost their own permit. They would've lost their own license to remain legally. It's just like if you're leasing an apartment. If you don't go down there and renew it, the landlord, the property manager got every right to do what?
Evict you.
Put you evict you, right? Because now you're doing what? You're holding on to possession of a property illegally.
Trespass.
It's trespass. That's correct. So you must understand, the reason why they never petitioned to abandon it is because, A, they know they will have to now do what? Vacate. But if they're not holding on to the property, if they think they're holding on to a use of force, right? Why don't they still just abandon and say, "I dare you to try to make me leave"? You know why they don't do that? Because that means they would no longer be a state. Because what gives them the authority to be a state? Their constitution, United States of America, and them signing off on the treaty as being a state. And if they don't have a state anymore because of that permit expired, that means they don't have no more state rights. They just become what? An illegal alien in Morocco that has no rights as a people. Because the constitution extends sovereignty to you that sets up your jurisdiction. They don't have no jurisdiction to claim that they allow the treaty to expire on them.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead, mother.
So which constitution is in subordinate position?
All of their constitutions are subordinate because all their constitutions are for permits, right? Okay. Let's take a look at that, brother. Let's answer it with a reference. Okay. Read up the definition of charter. Charter, now, "An instrument emanating from the sovereign power in the nature of a grant, either to the whole nation or to a class or a portion of the people to a colony or dependency and assuring to them certain rights and liberties." So Sidi Mohamed allowed them to do what? To declare their independence, the thirteen colonies declared their independence. How could they do that? Because Sidi Mohamed allowed them to remain in the land. But he also recognized they needed a constitution because that constitution was a charter. This is the history you must understand. Before they were the United States of America, right? They had the Articles of Confederation, right? Even before the Articles of Confederation, they were nothing but charters and extensions of Great Britain that were in Morocco. Great Brit, Britain extended them charter privileges to extend their parliamentary procedures in courts and laws over into Morocco. They turned around in seventeen seventy-four and said, "We're gonna get away from those charters," right? Massachusetts was the first colony to say, "We're cutting off the charter extension they have with Great Britain." And after that, the other twelve colonies said, "Yeah, we're gonna get rid of the charters as well." After that, they established their own charter called the Articles of Confederation. That was a charter. Then they dissolved that and established the United States of America, which was a charter. But each and every time, they had to deposit that charter with the Sultan, which was the sovereign. So they had to always send to the sovereign their colony and dependency constitution, i.e. their charter, with the hope that the sovereign would allow that emanating instrument to have an expiration date, a start and end date to remain in Morocco. Always remember that the colonists are immigrants within E in our land. They were seeking asylum and refuge in Morocco because they were always in battles with their original homelands, right? So when you go to charter, I know this is redundant, but redundancy is good, okay? According to the charter, the United States of America themselves admit that they are a charter, okay? It says, "As such, also were the charters granted to the certain of the English colonies in America." Charters were extended to them. They wrote this, right? Their barristers, lawyers, and attorneys wrote this, right? By far, this is it. But it goes down and say, "A charter differs from a constitution." Why? Because the constitution has to come first before a charter. A constitution can set up a charter, right? So you click on down, let's go on down, let's get down to this stuff. So it says, "Also a corporation's constitution or organic law." So a charter is also a corporation that's claiming to have a constitution because constitutions mean it constitutes the bylaws. No different than any company, right? Every company has what? Their articles and corporation, et cetera. They're just bylaws. They refer to a constitution because a constitution constitutes the bylaws. For everybody to function as chairmen of the board to govern over that corporation, govern over that charter. All banks have chairmen. All banks are charters. That's why we're going over this because all of their banks are nothing but charters. They have been extending a firman. And who extended the firman to their banks? Well, first, it was the United States International Organization that extended it to all their privatized banks. But the United States International Organization was given permission as a charter by the United States of America, who set up the United States. And the United States of America was given what? A sovereign status to remain in Morocco with their permit that expired every fifty years. And then that name was changed in eighteen thirty-six. To say now, it's not a fifty-year thing anymore. It's twelve months. Why is this important to understand? This is why the United States of America did not want Moors to know they were Moors. The Treaty of the Act Algesiras... The Treaty of the Act of Algiers. Not only does Moors oversee all of the empire banks, it also said our courts oversee any disputes dealing with banking. Do you know how powerful that is? When you control the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the land and all the banking? Most people have a desire to be powerful. What makes you powerful? They save money, and that's not the truth. Know what makes you powerful? Laws. She who controls the land controls the laws and then it's wealth. Moors control the land, the laws, and the wealth. That's what makes the Act of Algiers so powerful. That Article One talked about controlling the militia, the police, and the military. Excuse me, chapter one. Chapter two talked about what? Controlling all arms with what? Firmings called licenses and permits. And you get to chapter three, now we oversee all banking, which means we oversee all gold, silver, and notice in the empire. That must be understood. That's your triple principle. Sovereign to independence, interior domains, economic liberty without any inequality. Now, I told the Moors it's one of the most powerful treaties ever written in history. There is no other treaty written where the sovereign people have control over a vast estate such as an empire. This is an empire treaty. This isn't a, just a simple standalone state treaty. It's not a kingdom treaty. It's an empire treaty. That must be understood. It's the Moorish Empire, it's the Moroccan Empire. This is what you have to understand. And our banks oversee all banking in our jurisdiction. And not only does our bank oversee all jurisdiction, so does our courts. Let's take it from the top. Article five forty-five, actions instituted in Morocco by the bank shall be brought before the council court of defendant or before the jurisdiction of Morocco in accordance with the rules of competence established by the Sharifman Treaties and firmings. Actions instituted in Morocco against the bank shall be brought before a special tribunal consisting of three counsel magistrates and two associates. The diplomatic body shall each year arrange a list of magistrates, associates, and substitutes. The tribunal shall apply to such cases the rules of law, procedure, and competence established by the French legislation and commercial matters. Appeals from judgments pronounced by this tribunal shall be taken to the Federal Court of La Salle, whose decision shall be final. Now wait a minute. Like I said in class fifty-nine, why is France's name continuously mentioned in this treaty? Because France loaned the Sultan some money. France wanted to make sure it was in the treaty that the Sultan had to pay back that money. And it had to be paid back to Britain, Spain, et cetera, and all the others that shipped in to establish this banking institution in which the bank they established ended up being a corporation first. At first, it was a corporation that they allowed the Moorish government and the Sultan to oversee it, but the shareholders were still holding on to it as collateral. And the shareholders was making money off of this as well, right? So they injected their original capital to get established. The Sultan borrowing money, and now they're getting their return on investment and they're holding on to these banks as collateral, okay? So and we're talking a little bit more about this um this appeal judge pronounced right here. Appeals from judgments pronounced by this tribunal shall be taken to the Federal Court of La Salle, whose decisions shall be final. What does that mean? So the company counsel court, the Moorish court, makes adjudication, right? A ruling. But yet, the colonists put in a treaty during this time that they could now appeal it back to what? Another court in La Salle. But where's La Salle? Switzerland.
Oh, is it, is it Switzerland?
Yeah, Switzerland. Switzerland is a neutral state, right? Neutrality state. So Switzerland ended up being one of the first world courts at that time of nineteen oh six. It was like the first world court in dealing with any disputes in the empire Morocco. So they sent those disputes over to Switzerland, right? So the Switzerland bank will make the final decision because the Switzerland, not bank, but Switzerland courts acted like a world court, right? That must be understood. At that time, Switzerland was the neutrality state, just like right now it's the Netherlands, right? The ICJ, the International Court of Justice, is located in the head of the Netherlands, and the Netherlands acts as a what? A neutral state. Switzerland was the neutral state back in the day. So therefore, council court, even right now, the Moors can make a ruling through your council court. No worries. That's your regional ruling, right? But the United States of America could take that same case to where? The ICJ. That's where the ICJ concept came from, this treaty right here. The International Court of Justice as a world court was established because of this concept right here. That even though the Moors have council court, it can make a ruling. The cons can always appeal it outside of the jurisdiction. It goes to a neutral jurisdiction, a neutral now court. That way, the final decision would be held in the ICJ. And that's the reason ICJ would tell you in their statutes in their handbook that all their rulings are final. There's no appeal. That must be understood, all right? All of their concepts came from this treaty. Okay, Article forty-six.
Article forty-six, in case of dispute over the clauses of the concession or litigation arising between the Moorish government and the bank, the difference shall be referred without appeal or recourse to the Federal Court of La Salle. All disputes arising between the shareholders and the bank in regard to the enforcement of the bylaws or by reason of the corporate business shall likewise be referred without appeal or recourse to the same court.
Okay, so right there now, we're we're still talking about the fact that council court does have jurisdiction over these cases dealing with the bank. But the colonists put a provision in there that says, yeah, that can't be the final ruling. Let's have a provision that says we can also take it to a neutral court that was located in Switzerland, okay? All right, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna get a nice clean read from Article forty-six all the way to Article fifty, okay, brother? All right.
Article forty-seven, the bylaws of the bank shall be framed on the following basis by a special committee provided for in Article fifty-seven. They shall be approved by the censors and ratified by the General Assembly of Shareholders. Article forty-eight, the general constituent constituent assembly of the corporation shall fix the place where the meetings of the shareholders and the sessions of the Board of Directors shall be held. The latter, however, shall have the faculty of meeting at any other city if it deems it expedient. The office of the manager of the bank shall be at Tangier. Article forty-nine, the bank shall be administered by a Board of Directors constituting of as many members as there are parts in the initial capital. The directors shall have the most extensive powers for the administration and management of the corporation. They shall especially appoint the managers, assistant managers, and members of the commission indicated in Article fifty-four as well as the managers of branches and agencies. The employees of the company shall be recu- recruited so far as possible from among the citizens, subjects, or proteges of the several powers which have taken part in subscribing the capital. Article fifty, the directors who shall be appointed by the General Assembly of Shareholders shall be nominated by the groups subscribing the capital. The first board shall remain five years in office. At the expiration of this period, there shall be a renewal at the rate of three members annually. The order of outgoing directors shall be determined by lot. There may be re- they may be re-elected. On the constitution of the corporation, each subscribing group shall have the right to nominate as many directors as it shall have subscribed entire parts. But such groups shall not be compelled to select candidates of their own nationality. The subscribing groups shall not retain their right of nominating directors when the latter are superseded or re-elected unless they can prove they still have in their possession at least one half the share conferring that right upon them. In a case whereby reason of these provisions, a subscribing group shall be no longer in a position to nominate a director, the General Assembly of Shareholders shall make a direct nomination.
All right, thank you very much. Now, what we learned in Articles forty-six through fifty and which we won't need to go through that complete um series of provisions because those provisions are basically just setting up the 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 Board of Directors, right? That's all it is, setting up governance of an international organization or intergovernmental organization known as the bank. But always remember that banks are charters, okay? And all of those banks are tied back to a jurisdiction, and the jurisdiction is always Morocco, all right? That must be understood. Okay, for example, the International Monetary Fund, the IMF, why am I talking about this? I'm just using it as an example, right? Because we could also talk about what they call the Federal Reserve, because the Federal Reserve is also an intergovernmental organization. It's a privatized bank. The shareholders and privateers own that charter. They own that corporate constitution, all right? So let's go back to charter be- before we go into IMF. Let's go back to charter. So charter, right? Charter. The charter is a contract between the state and the corporation, between the corporation and the stockholders, and between the stockholders and the state. See, the state sets up the charter, and the charters are typically privatized organizations, okay? Okay, let's go back to IMF. Where's the IMF? A corporation, a charter, right? It's an intergovernmental organization. But the IMF is an intergovernmental organization of who? The United States. The United States has now made the IMF a member of the United Nations. More or less like their trust where they utilize the monies through the IMF, the loan monies out to other states, okay? Let's get into it. What's the, what's the International Monetary Fund, IMF, mother?
The International Monetary Fund is an international, intergovernmental organization. Example, an international financial institution headquartered in Washington DC consisting of a hundred and ninety countries. Formed in nineteen forty-four, started on December twenty-seventh nineteen forty-five at the Brit- Briton Woods, New Hampshire Conference, primarily by the ideas of Harry Dexter White and John Maynard Keynes. It came into formal existence in nineteen forty-five with twenty-nine member countries and the goal of reconstructing the international monetary system.
Okay, so why am I highlighting this?
Because everybody had to buy into it.
Yes, everybody had to buy into it, right? But where was the International Monetary Fund established? In Morocco. Which gives our Empire State Bank jurisdiction even over the IMF. So therefore, the IMF, they tell you by their own records, they'll say, it's headquartered in Washington DC. Well, where's Washington DC? In Morocco. So it originally started in Briton Woods, New Hampshire. Well, where's the charter colony known as New Hampshire? In Morocco. So they had a conference, right? So this these gentlemen, Harry Dexter White, who's a citizen of the United States, and John Maynard Keynes, which was a citizen of Great Britain, they came up with the concept of of this banking system, right? It came into formal existence in nineteen forty-five. What else happened in nineteen forty-five? The establishment of the United Nations Charter, right? So as you can see, these two are working hand in hand. All this is taking place where? In Morocco, in the Empire Morocco, more specifically in the West, as the world calls, the West. So all this is taking place right here in our front yard of the empire, right? So that IMF, as they call it, the acronym, is a charter. And our Empire State Bank will have jurisdiction even over the IMF. Now, I don't say that for Moors to be aggressive towards the IMF. I'm trying to give you an example that when Nobodra Lee says, we're rich, we're actually wealthy because we oversee these banks. What does that mean when we oversee the banks? They owe us taxes, consumption taxes. They owe us interest. You can't establish nothing in somebody's land without paying rent. You must understand. All this time, the reason why they had to give you the nomenclature of Negro, Black, Colored, African-American, Slave, et cetera, is because they did not want you to understand the party name to the contract. And what's the party name to the contract? Moors. What's the party name to the contract? Moorish. What's the most specific party name you need to know about? Empire State. The word state in constitutions is what sets up your opportunity to enforce your custom jurisdiction over any banks. That must be understood. Treaty Supreme Law of the Land, not charters. So you must understand, Moors, as as it relates to what they call sequestration. An organic state has, can, and supersedes any international organization. States are sovereign, not international organizations, not corporations. Corporations and intergovernmental organizations, international organizations are all subordinate to states. There are no international organizations, and there are not, there are no more international organizations or intergovernmental organizations, I should, I should say, unless what? There's a state that sets it up and extends a permit, a permit to that financial, financial institution. That must be understood. Without the state, there's no charters. So who oversees everything that goes on the empire? Competent Moors states. And more specifically, the Empire State that once concluded through a constitution called the United States of Morocco will oversee all banks in the empire. This is important to understand. Okay, let's go back to the treaty. Why did I go back to Article forty-nine? Okay, look what the colonists are talking about once again. They're talking about who? Choosing employees. Right? They're choosing citizens, subjects, and proteges to work at these banking institutions. Moors have to understand the word subject and protege is in your treaties. That's exactly your political status if you don't return to Morocco. And citizens, subjects, and proteges cannot enforce the jurisdiction in Morocco because you're still what? Subjugated. You don't, you haven't corrected your political status. That's why they're pointing this out in Article forty-nine. Where are they gonna get their employees from? The people who live in the land. Just like they said about the slaves out there picking cotton, where'd they get them from? The people who live in the land. Who do they get to work for their corporations? The people that live in the land. That's why the colonists have outsourced all of the so-called jobs overseas. They gave the jobs to everybody in different lands. So therefore, they're picking what? Citizens, subjects, and proteges over in different states. They choose them from the people of the land. That must be understood. In Article forty-nine, they're talking about these subjects and proteges. Just wanted to point that out. Okay. Let's move on to this right here. On the constitution of the corporation, right? You see how they phrase that in Article forty-nine? Corporations can have constitutions because a constitution just sets up the bylaws. But when a state, an organic state, sets up a constitution, it has every right to make a land claim because it's organic. What does organic mean? It's claiming the actual soil. Everything in the soil, everything on top of the soil, all the air rights and the sea rights. Corporations cannot claim estates. They can only lease parcels of land in that estate or state because the state is sovereign. So therefore, can constitutions be considered corporations? And corporations can have constitutions? Yes. Because you have to understand the meaning of the constitution. It depends on how it's set up. Who has the constitution? Is it the organic state or is it the charter? That's where you have to make the distinction. This is why the United States of America had to undermine the Moors because their United States of America constitution was a charter, and charters are subordinate to the sovereign. They didn't wanna pay taxes to the Moors. That must be understood. Okay, so let's start our reading of Article fifty-one. Okay, so let's start our reading of Article fifty-one through fifty-five, and hopefully we'll get through fifty-eight as well. Okay, mother? Let's get started.
Article fifty-one, each of the following institutions, the Bank of the German Empire, the Bank of England, the Bank of Spain, and the Bank of France shall, with their government's approval, appoint a censor for the State Bank of Morocco. The censors shall remain in office four years. The outgoing censors may be reappointed. In the case of death or resignation, the institution which had appointed the former incumbent shall fill the vacancy, but only for the unexpired term of the vacated office. Article fifty-two, the censors who shall exercise their mandate by virtue of this act of the signatory powers shall, in the interests of the latter, see that the bank is efficiently operated and ensure the strict observance of the clauses of the concession and of the statutes. They shall see that the regulations governing the issuance of notes are precisely fulfilled and shall be supervised, and, and shall supervise the operations tending to put the monetary situation on a sound basis. But they shall never, under any pretext, interfere in the conduct of business or in the internal administration of the bank. Each of the censors shall be empowered to examine at all times the bank accounts and to call for information either from the Board of Directors or the Manager's Office with regard to the management of the bank and attend the meetings of the Board of Directors, but only in an advisory capacity. The four censors shall meet at Tangier in the discharge of their duties at least once every two years at a time to be fixed by, by them. Other meetings at Tangier or elsewhere may take place if three of the censors shall demand it. The four censors shall draw up in common accord an annual report which shall be annexed to that of the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors shall transmit without delay a copy of such report to each of the government's signatory to the Act of the Conference. Article fifty-three, the censors' emoluments and traveling expenses shall be fixed by the committee on bylaws. They shall be paid directly by the banks charged with their nomination and the amount of reimbursed, and the amount reimbursed to these institutions by the State Bank of Morocco. Article fifty-four, to assist the Manager's Office, a committee shall be established at Tangier, the members of which shall be chosen by the Board of Directors without distinction of nationality from among the notables residing at Tangier and holding shares of the bank. This committee, which shall be presided over by one of the managers or assistant managers, shall give its advice on questions of discounts and opening of credit accounts. It shall transmit a monthly report on these various subjects to the Board of Directors. Article fifty-five, the capital of which the amount shall be fixed by the special committee designated in Article fifty-seven shall be not less than fifteen million francs nor more than twenty million francs and shall be gold coin and the shares thereof of the value of five hundred francs each shall be inscribed with various gold, gold coinages at a fixed rate of exchange as determined by the bylaws. The said capital may thereafter be increased at one or more times by a decision of the General Assembly of Shareholders. The subscription to the increased capital shall be reserved for all shareholders without distinction of groups in proportion to their individual holdings.
All right, thank you very much, mother. All right, so what should we take away from this? Obviously, they're just still setting up the board, understanding the bylaws, who's in charge. But that's the question at the end of the day. Who is in charge of the banking? Okay, you notice they keep using this word censor, right? So the censors, who's the censors? What did we learn about that in chapter three? The censor is who? The Moorish state government, who makes the High Commissioner and the censors of the Moors overseeing these board of directors, right? Don't get me wrong, the board of directors are working side by side with the Moorish government and the state. But the censor has the jurisdiction over the bank and over the shareholders. And that the Moorish consul court has the jurisdiction over any disputes as it relates to that bank. That must be understood. The censor is a very important word that you're learning here, okay? Let's move on. Okay, mother, let's go ahead and pick up Article fifty-six.
Article fifty-six, the initial capital of the bank shall be divided into as many equal parts as there are participants among the powers represented at the conference. To this end, each power shall designate a bank which shall exercise either for itself or for a group of banks the above specified right of subscription as well as the right of nomination of the directors as provided in Article fifty. Any bank selected as head of a group may, with its government's authorization, be superseded by another bank of the same country. States wishing to avail themselves of their rights of subscription must notify such intention to the Royal Government of Spain within a period of four weeks from the signature of this act by the representatives of the powers. Two parts, however, equal to those reserved to each of the subscribing groups shall be assigned to the consortium of banks signatory of the contract of June twelfth nineteen oh four. In compensation for this secession, we shall be made by the consortium to the State Bank of Morocco. One, of the rights specified in Article thirty-three of the contract, two, of the right inscribed in Article thirty-two, paragraph two of the contract concerning the available balance of the customs receipts with the express reservation of the general preferential right to the aggregate proceeds of customs granted to bondholders by Article eleven of the same contract. Article fifty-seven, within a period of three weeks from the time of closing, the subscriptions notified by the Royal Government of Spain to the powers interested, a special committee imposed by delegates appointed by the subscribing groups as provided in Article fifty for the appointment of directors, shall meet with a view to elaborating the bylaws of the bank. The General Constituent Assembly shall meet two months after the ratification of this act. The functions of such special committee shall cease upon the organization of the corporation. The special committee shall fix the place of its meetings. Article fifty-eight, no modifications shall be made in the bylaws except on the motion of the Board of Directors and with the advice and consent of the censors and the Imperial High Commissioner. Such modifications must be voted by a three-quarters majority, either present or represented of the General Assembly of Shareholders.
All right, and that is the end of the reading of chapter three. As I wrap up with this last article of Article fifty-eight, what's the most important thing we take as we close out chapter three? I'll read it back to you. No modifications shall be made in the bylaws except the motion of the Board of Directors and with the advice and consent of the censors and the Imperial High Commissioner. That's what you must understand about this banking. Moors oversee all banking. That must be understood. All right, so we'll go ahead and get into, in class sixty-one, we'll start in chapter four, which is about the Qadi, right? How do we collect on taxes and revenue, all right? So we'll go ahead and end with that, all right? Here's mine.